I'm going to call to order the October 28, 2014 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome those of you who will hear the council chamber to the council chamber tonight. I also want to welcome those who might be watching us on Channel 10, those who might be watching us on the computers, those who might be listening to us on the computer, or those who might be listening to us on the radio. This is your city government, and we hope you'll participate in whatever way works for you. So again, I welcome you. I'll ask the clerk, take the roll call, the council members.
Cummings?
Here.
Peck?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Pansky?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Tower?
Here.
Present seven.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody to rise, and then council member Cummings will handle the invocation. We have a couple students who will help us with the pledge tonight.
As we gather together tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
That's good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask our students to hang around. Why don't you walk out in the center here where everybody can see you. We do appreciate you taking time coming down here to help us with the pledge of allegiance. These people like to get to know you a little bit, and so might the people who are watching on television. So, whatever it is, I'm going to pass the microphone down, and why don't you tell us what your name is, where you go to school, and what grade you're in, and then so we'd know a little bit more about you. Why don't you tell us tonight what maybe your favorite course is at school, your favorite class at school, and why it's your favorite class.
My name is Charlie. And I go to Cabrini. Third. Gym. Because I get to handle all my friends.
Man, a few words.
My name is Eli. I go to Cabrini also. I go in fourth grade. My favorite class is art because I like to make things in art.
Very good. Again, we do appreciate you coming tonight, and because of that, I have a certificate for each one of you, so I'll pass it out. Charlie. And there you go, Eli. And if we could give them some applause for helping us out tonight. You and your parents can take off if you'd like. You don't have to stay for the whole council meeting. So thanks for coming. Okay, the first order of business on the agenda itself tonight is a couple public hearings. The first public hearing is one that requires two readings, and so will not be voted on until next time, but I will read it three times tonight. And if somebody would like to come up and speak to it, feel free to come up the microphone. The microphone is open, so you might come up while I'm reading it three times. Ordinance 14-466, approve amendment to zoning ordinance to create section 30-50 establishing a shoreland overview district. Second reading, ordinance 14-466, approve amendment to zoning ordinance to create section 30-51 establishing a shoreland overlay district. Third and final reading for tonight, ordinance 14-466, approve amendment to zoning ordinance to create section 30-51 establishing a shoreland overlay district. I see no one coming forward. What I will do, Mr. Cummings, would you like to speak to that tonight?
Yes, I'd like to waive the rules and vote on this tonight. Second.
Anybody want to comment on waiving the rule, voting on it tonight? Okay, we'll bring it back for discussion on the motion to waive the rules and vote on it tonight, and what sort of the rationale for doing that.
We pass it with the plan commission. I just want to get this going. I think it affects some people who may or may not want to start building properties on the water.
Other questions, discussion?
Just comment. I second it. It's really the same thing. I think it's very well thought out. No one is here to speak on it. Those that participated in it and helped put it together came to the plan commission. I agree with Mr. Cummings, just move it along and get it going in case someone does want to do some remodeling or building yet this year.
Any other comments? Okay. I think the roll call vote on the motion to waive the rules to vote on ordinance 14-466 tonight.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Currie Seven?
Okay, the next public hearing is on--
Mayor?
I'm sorry, we need the motion. I need a motion to approve ordinance 14-466.
Some move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on ordinance 14-466 itself.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Currie Seven?
That takes us to resolution 14-467. This will require three readings also, but it will be up for a vote by the council tonight. So I'll read it three times. If you'd like to come forward to speak to the microphone, please feel free to do so. Resolution 14-467, approval of final resolution authorizing reassessments of tax parcel 15-1898-1000 pursuant to section 66.0703 (10), Wisconsin statutes by exercising special assessment police powers under section 66.0703 Sub 1 Sub B, Wisconsin statutes for the Jackson-Murdoch Intersection Reconstruction Project. Second reading, resolution 14-467, approval of final resolution authorizing reassessments of tax parcel 15-1898-1000 pursuant to section 66.0703 Sub 10, Wisconsin statutes by exercising special assessment police powers under section 66.0703 Sub 1 Sub B, Wisconsin statutes for the Jackson-Murdoch Intersection Reconstruction Project. Third and final reading, resolution 14-467, approval of final resolution authorizing reassessments of tax parcel 15-1898-1000 pursuant to section 66.0703 Sub 10, Wisconsin statutes by exercising special assessment police powers under section 66.0703 Sub 1 Sub B, Wisconsin statutes for the Jackson-Murdoch Intersection Reconstruction Project. I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
Some move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on resolution 14-467.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Currie Seven?
Okay, that takes us to citizen statements to the council. This is an opportunity when people can come before the council and comment on something going on in the city, something they see as positive that's going on, or maybe a concern that they have in the city, and something that's not on the agenda for tonight. If you come up, please give us your name, address, limit your comments to no more than five minutes, speak directly to the council, and there's to be no election hearing.
I'm Daniel Lynch. I reside at 310 South Eagle Street. I am a member of the Candlelight Debating Club, which meets once a month on the first Tuesday, and debates topics of relevance. The one I wanted to just mention to the council and to the citizens of this city is, in December, we're going to be debating the topic, should Oshkosh establish a wheel tax to pay for street improvements and street maintenance. I want people to know that. I'm personally hunting for at least one, and hopefully two, people to speak on the affirmative and negative side. If I can't get two but can get one, I'll take the other side, whatever it is. Thank you. That's my first announcement. My second announcement is that this is probably the last time I'll be addressing the council about smoking issues. The reason? Kids aren't out there smoking visibly. Last year, toward the end of the year, I hunted a few times, and I'd find two or three kids smoking in a car if I really hunted, but they weren't outstanding around smoking. If you go back to 1992, when it became illegal for kids to smoke, or say even possess tobacco, as I was riding the bus at 3:00 PM past West High, and it was dismissal time then, dismissal times have changed now, I would see about 100 kids lighting up simply as they got out the door. And in the mornings, there was a large group met at Hawkins Porter to smoke. And I campaigned with this council for a long time. Last year, kids were not meeting at Hawkins Porter, they're not meeting at Hawkins Porter now, and they're not standing around in the parking lot at West High smoking. So my conclusion is, my job is done, and I thank you for your, all the things you've done over the years, like enacting bans on smoking in restaurants, and, well, any place of employment, not just restaurants and bars, bans on smoking at bus stops, bans in a wide variety of areas, hospitals have gone that route as well. The U.S. Center for Disease Control still says that it's our number-one preventable cause of preventable death. Far exceeding alcohol, which is our number-two, which far exceeds ones that are, and I don't remember the order, in third, fourth, fifth, sixth, things like fire, car crashes, suicide, homicide. In fact, car crashes have gone down dramatically in the last 15 years, and one reason is, is a lot less drunk driving crashes, which is kind of a thing where, do you count it as alcohol, or do you count it as car crash? But it really doesn't matter. What really matters is it's dropped tremendously. We've made a great deal of progress, and so as I say goodbye, I probably won't address you on smoking again. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lynch. Good news. Anybody else like to come forward, make some comments? Seeing no one come forward, that'll take us to the key consent agenda. These are items that are viewed at first glance by the administration as being non-controversial in nature. As such, they're presented as a whole package. The council will tend to vote on them as a package unless either a council member or a member of the, our taxpayer comes to the microphone and asks that an item be removed from the agenda. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read through the items. If you'd like to speak to a particular item, the microphone is open, please come up at the time I read the particular item and speak. Once we've gone through all these items, and individuals have had an opportunity to come to the microphone, we'll bring it back to the council for consideration of approval. Okay, approval of bills presented by the finance director, approval of cash report for September 2014. Resolution 14-468, approve planned development to construct office retail building at West Town Avenue and North Washburn Street. Resolution 14-469, approve conditional use permit and land use review for property located at 2340-2350 State Road 44. Resolution 14-470, award bid for Public Works contract number 14-27, Tenorcon Corporation for water filtration plant sedimentation basin concrete repairs. Resolution 14-471, award bid for Public Works contract number 14-28 to August Winter and Suns Inc. for water filtration plant piping repairs. Resolution 14-472, approval of change order for Public Works contract with American Fence Company for fencing and installation for the Public Works Field Operation Facility. Resolution 14-473, approval of amendment to engineering services agreement with My Tech Services Inc. for sanitary sewer lateral televising. Resolution 14-474, approval of agreement for engineering services with CH2M Hill Engineers Inc. for design and bidding services for the Marion Road Water Tower replacement. Resolution 14-475, approved disposition sale of surplus property to PIE Investments LLC, 114 East Irving Avenue. Resolution 14-476, resolution providing for the issuance and sale of $5,980,000 aggregate principal amount of sewer system revenue bond series 2014D of the City of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, providing details prescribing the form of bond, awarding said revenue bonds to the best bidder, and providing for the payment of said revenue bonds and other details and covenants with respect thereto. Resolution 14-477, resolution providing for the issuance and sale of $3,795,000 aggregate principal amount of water system revenue bond series 2014E of the City of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, providing details prescribing the form of bond, awaiting said revenue bonds to the best bidder, and providing for the payment of said revenue bonds and other details and covenants with respect thereto. Resolution 14-478, approval of special event, ARC Restoration Contracting, Lead Auto Group to utilize streets for their Gus Mackler basketball tournament, August 14, 15, and 16, 2015. Resolution 14-479, disallowance acclaimed by Lori Lex. Resolution 14-480, disallowance acclaimed by Jennifer Dunham. Resolution 14-481, approve operator licenses. See no one come forward, one last chance to come forward. See nobody come forward, I'll bring it back to the council for any questions that they may have or discussion.
Ms. Larson and Mr. Harrington, Harrigan, please. The 14-476 and 14-477, the original amounts that were published on the agenda have been reduced on the revised agenda, which is good news for the community. Could you please explain why?
Oh, definitely. I'm glad to announce today that our bond sales were very successful. Today's bond sales resulted in a significant reduction in principal and interest from the pre-sale estimates that we received in May. So I have Mike Harrigan, he will give you the details.
Thank you, Trina. We did distribute a pamphlet with documents in it before the council meeting this evening, and there's a lot of detailed information in there, but specifically to answer your question, counselor, the reason for the ability for the city to reduce the total amount of principal in this bond issue is the fact that the successful bidding underwriters bid with a bond premium, meaning that they're paying a face amount that was higher than the original par amount of the bonds. In the case of the sewer revenue bonds, that difference was about $215,000 that we were able to reduce the issue by because of the bid premium of $159,000, along with a reduction in their underwriting discount that they're taking on the deal. So in making the adjustment, if you looked at page four of our report on the issue, you'll see on the right side of that, the reductions that resulted in the reduced sizing of the issue. I might mention, as long as we're on that sewer issue, that we had originally projected a total cost of principal and interest that was actually $600,694 higher than what you will actually pay as a result of this sale. And there's a twofold reason for that. One of the big ones is the fact that interest rates have dropped since the time that we did the issue, and the other one is the bid premium that we just talked about. So that's, I think, helpful to the city. We did receive five bids there. The best bid was from Robert W. Baird at 2.965%, and the range of interest that we were projecting was 3.5% to 3.6%. That's on the sewer side. On the water side, we also dropped that issue size down by $170,000, again due to the bid premium, in that case of $129,000, along with the reduction in the amount charged by the underwriter for their fees. And when you put that together with the reduced interest expense, you're actually going to be spending $345,063 less than what the original projections were. So that enters to the benefit of your ratepayers in the city. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have about any of that.
Any other questions? Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for providing good news. We like that.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to do it.
Okay, questions on any of the other items on the consent agenda?
Mayor?
Mr. Herman?
Mr. Davis could come forward, or Miss, yeah, Mr. Davis probably can answer these. This will be referenced, resolution 14-468 and 14-469. These are economic development items that are coming forward. Could you say a little information on what type of businesses are going to be going into these locations, if you can give that information? And just how much did we have to facilitate these, since GoEDC is out there and working and moving forward?
These are two commercial projects out on our west side. The first one is kind of in front of the Lowe's on the north side, and that is for a two-unit commercial property. I'm not at liberty to say who the tenants are because they haven't, they didn't present that to us, it's not in any of the documents.
Right.
But it would be space for two tenants in front of Lowe's in a little strip type of nicely designed building. That's something we worked with owner slash developer over the last few months. Came in originally with a project that didn't quite meet the requirements, and if you recall, we scaled that down back so it could fit. The other project is Taco John's on Highway 44, that we worked very closely with the owner and the proposer to look at all the potential ramifications, the pluses and minuses of the project, and finally figured out a way to get this to the point where it could be a yes. And I think Mr. Sharp is here available if you'd want to have him ask about that as well.
And that second one, resolution 14-469, that is in our Universal Business Park?
Yes, it's on the north side of Highway 44, so that's a little unique. Mr. Sharp owns the commercial office buildings right beside it, and he did own the other parcel to the east.
Is this some of that new, several years ago, I think you asked council to purchase some more land in that business park, has that some of this?
No, that's not this part. This is an existing piece.
Okay.
Mr. Sharp owned it for a few years.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Just a quick question for Mr. Potek regarding resolution 14-472. There's a change--
Just one sec. Anybody else have any other questions on these? I just wanted, while he's up here, I just wanted to see. Seeing none, okay, then move on. Go ahead.
If you could just clarify, this is an increase due to a difference in the height of a fence?
That's correct. We had, as part of our land swap, we were working with the university to use some of their property for our new public works facility in exchange for vacant land that we owned on the south side of Third. We built a storage area for them. They currently have an existing fence on the north side of Third that's six feet tall, but it also has one foot of barbed wire, so it's actually a seven-foot fence. So when we bid it out, we bid out a six-foot fence, and actually, we needed to bid out a seven-foot fence.
That's fine. Thank you for the clarification. I do also have a comment on item, resolution 14-474. I am part of an Oshkosh Arts Council, and we have been meeting at Beckett's every last Monday of the month at 7:00 PM, so anybody is invited to join us. We are just discussing possible interest with local artists to have some input in the new Marion Road Water Tower design. We did have a chance to meet with a few city staff to discuss this further. I am excited to have a commitment with the engineers to work with us publicly, so more to come on that, but if there is any interest in anybody joining us, or, you know, future workshops with the contractor, the engineers, we will keep you posted on that. If you have any questions, feel free to get ahold of me regarding this project.
Okay, other questions, discussion of any of the items? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion second on the consent agenda as presented to the council.
Some move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any formal discussion on anything related to the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will ask clerk to take the roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Currie Seven?
Okay, there were no items removed from the consent agenda, so that takes us down to a pending ordinance. And that is ordinance 14-482. While I'm reading it, if you'd like to come forward to speak to it, feel free to do so. Ordinance 14-482, approved request to attach to the city from town of Nakaimai, Reiner Voluntary Attachment, 3826 County Road End. I see no one coming forward. No one coming forward, we'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
Some move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. I see no discussion. I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on ordinance 14-482.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Currie Seven?
Okay, it takes us to a new ordinance. Under this new ordinance, it needs to be read in two separate council meetings. Tonight will be the first reading, so there'll be no action taken by the council, but I'll read it once, and if you'd like to come forward to speak to it, again, the microphone is open. Ordinance 14-483, amend ordinances pertaining to municipal parking lots. See no one coming forward. We will not consider this for action by the council unless council member has any comment they want to make, and we will move forward. I'll move forward to new resolutions. New resolutions, we'll be doing these one at a time, and on each case, I'll read through one. While I'm reading it, if you'd like to come forward to speak to one, please feel free to come up to the microphone and do so. The first one's resolution 14-484, approve agreement with GoEDC for economic development marketing funds. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? I see no, do I see somebody coming forward or not, or do you want to wait a second? We'll end up calling you up, I'm sure, anyway, so. So why don't you just stand ready, and then we'll-- Okay, I'll ask for a motion a second on resolution 14-484.
Some move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, and I'll ask Mr. Davis to comment on this, because I'm sure people have questions of Mr. Davis about this.
Yes, the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation is undertaking a marketing program. They've gone through a process to put together some staff or consultants to do this. They've presented that information to the city. I believe you should have received the memos as to where they are with that. We had reserved some funds in 2013 to spend on economic development marketing here in 2014, and this seems to be the appropriate use of those funds for general economic development, website development, and branding. So that's why it's here tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions anybody to have.
Questions? Questions?
I'm happy to have this before us and approve it after Fitz and starts for the better part of two years. We have a public-private partnership for economic development in this community, and like I said, I am happy to approve this funding.
Any other comments? Yes, Allison Osby?
And just to clarify too, because originally, the funds had been set aside for a different project, so I just want to make sure that, you know, the criteria hadn't been met, doesn't look like it's going to be met, so therefore, it's okay to move it on to GoEDC.
Yes, we went and reviewed the original resolution, and those criteria have not been met.
Okay, well, then I'm all for moving the funds and putting it towards a great new marketing effort.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to let the council and the rest of the public know, although I'm not on the board for GoEDC, I am on its marketing committee, and I'm going to vote present on this measure.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, resolution-- All right, Resolution 14-484, approve agreement with GOEDC for economic development marketing funds, $25,000. Please take the roll call vote on 14-484.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Present.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate six, one present.
Okay, this is going to bring us up to a series of resolutions that I'd like the city manager just to comment, because I'm not sure everybody quite understands what's going on with the aviation park and the agreement with Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, and some changes have been made in some of the grants over time. So if you could provide us with some background that'll relate to 485, 486, 487, 488, 489, it's a little separate issue.
I'm going to ask Mr. Davis to give an overview. This is something he's been working closely with, and we also have Catherine Alquist with East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission that East Central is actually the agency that's administering the main portion of the grant. So between Alan and Kat, I think you'll get a lot better information than you would from me.
Okay, Mr. Davis?
The section of the Department of Defense, they provided East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission with funds to help diversify the economy based on the defense cuts that came through the federal budget. If you recall, we retained Explorer Solutions, the consulting firm, to help us identify the aviation and aerospace clusters that best fit Whitman. Since the time we started, two more airports were added to the project in addition to Whitman. We also added Outagame County and Fond du Lac County, largely because we see that the regional impact of these types of economic development downturns and upturns, because we are very interconnected, especially when it comes to aviation and aerospace, since we have airports in such close proximity. They all have kind of their own niches, and we wanted to make sure that we were, say, complementing or collaborative when it comes to what kind of aviation and aerospace firms would be interested in Whitman and the other airports in the area. DoD was very interested in funding the expansion of the project to include the other two airports, so they've provided $30,000 for each airport to be added. They did require a 10% local match, and each Outagame and Fond du Lac Counties have pledged the 10% match, which comes to only $3,000 each. They can't do that directly. City staff will actually be spending time on the project, but they're paying for the city's staff time to work on the expansion of the project, which is namely my time. So DoD granted money to East Central, who's then passing it to us. That's the first agreement. The next two are for the other airports to fund their 10% of the expansion. And then the last piece is for the Explorer Solutions to actually expand the scope of services to include the two additional airports. So those four are interrelated and depend on each other for successful completion of the project.
Okay, I guess it's always important to at least get that up front. If we want to ask some questions, we can do it on paper one, or ask some now, because I'm going to give the people that are here in the council chambers, we go through its resolution, opportunity to talk, and we can talk about each one. But if people have some general questions, so the people have a greater understanding of what these are about, I'll go ahead and ask those questions, Mr. Council.
My one question is for Ms. Laurinson. Can these be voted on as one package? Because they're so interrelated with each other.
Actually, they could. It may be just easier for the clerk.
One at a time?
Do them one at a time, because we did separate them.
Yeah, I prefer.
Okay. Anybody else have any substantive questions in terms of?
I have a question of on 485 with East Central, I guess?
If we want to ask specific questions on each one, I'm going to read through each one.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to get the general information out front, then we may have more questions. So I'd ask Mr. Davis to hang around up here, because there may be more questions on individual ones here. Okay, so at least that's a little background, so people here in the council chambers have a little background, as well as some council members, and so then we'll start moving through each one and consider each one by itself. Okay, Resolution 14-485, approve revised intergovernmental agreement with East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission for Department of Defense Office of Economic Adjustment Grant Funds for Regional Aviation Aerospace Business Cluster and Aviation Business Park Development. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second of Resolution 14-485.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Question. I forgot your name again, I'm sorry.
I'm Captain August.
Captain, I just have a question.
Come on up to the microphone, so everybody can hear you.
In the, in the resolution talks about aerospace business cluster. Could you kind of just explain what a business cluster is, or how East Central is going to delve through this, and what are you hoping to end up giving back to the different, well, in this case, our council? What kind of information are you looking for?
First of all, just like a little bit of background on the entire project. As Alan pointed out and Mark, East Central is managing the entire set of projects. There are actually six different initiatives that are being funded by the Department of Defense. This aerospace cluster, aviation cluster study is one of them, which the city of Oshkosh received a sub award specifically to sub-manage that project. So they hired Explorer Solutions to do that, and that's, they're working on it now, creating those, or they're working with the committee to develop niche clusters, and currently, they're looking to select the ones that would best fit the region.
So by, just kind of what do you mean by cluster? I mean, are we looking at businesses? Are we looking at, what are we just looking at in this cluster? I mean, are we office complexes, the what are we, what is it?
Yeah, I mean, Alan could step in, because he really, he knows more about it than I do. But being involved in the committee myself, the Explorer Solutions has really provided, you know, a wide range of varieties that, you know, you would call cluster. They're aviation-focused, anything from kind of manufacturing, technology-related, up-and-coming options for new startup technologies that don't really exist in the market today that much, to, you know, things that have been out there, you know, more often, you know. I, I don't know if I can speak exactly to the cluster or the niches themselves, but it's, you know, they considered basically a lot of different options for our types of airports that we offer between Outagame, Fond du Lac, and Whitman.
Okay.
I think, you know, service, service and support for those kinds of industries. I mean, there's insurance agents that we actually have out at the airport right now that focus just on aviation, and that's particularly keen. So, you know, other business services that are around that and grow out of that, grow out of those, you know, particular manufacturing activities in aviation, you know, EAA obviously is a, is a membership-based organization, but that's another example of how these clusters can kind of mushroom.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Also, cluster kind of refers to aviation, just like you could have an IT cluster or some other things. It's kind of the approach in economic development. In fact, if you watch what's going on at the state level, there's a discussion about focusing on particular kinds of industries, and different industries form different clusters.
One question. Refresh my memory, are Explorer Solutions, is that the firm out of Quebec that was here this summer doing focus groups?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comment regarding Resolution 14-485? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-485.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate seven.
Okay, Resolution 14-486, approve intergovernmental agreement with Fond du Lac County Regional Airport to undertake a regional aviation aerospace business cluster development, accept contribution. Anybody like to comment on that? Ain't no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions regarding Resolution 14-486 and acceptance of the contribution? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-486.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate seven.
Takes us to Resolution 14-487, approve intergovernmental agreement with Outagame County Regional Airport to undertake a regional aviation aerospace business cluster development and accept the contribution there. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Questions on Resolution 14-487 in particular?
Mr. Mayor, just a, just a quick comment. I had an opportunity to chat with the administration from Outagame County Regional Airport back in late, late July. It was during the EAA. It was right about the time that they were asked to be a part of this, this grant, and I can't tell you, they were absolutely pleased to be included along with this, and I'm assuming the same goes for Fond du Lac as well in the previous resolution. But this is really an outstanding, outstanding opportunity to take advantage and leverage some regional resources. I know decades ago, you know, I think folks in Oshkosh viewed the Outagame County Regional Airport as a competitor, but that was really a kind of myopic view of commercial aviation. There's so much more to aviation, and, you know, both the Fond du Lac Airport, as well as the Outagame County Airport, have some, some manufacturing opportunities there that enhance the region, and I think as those grow, you know, they're owned by some rather large worldwide corporate companies, I think, as their opportunities grow, that's going to create some opportunities at Whitman Regional Airport as well. And that's really what, you know, what this cluster study is all about in the end. So I commend the staff on including those, those outlying airports as well as part of this process.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, ask clerk take the roll call vote on 14-487.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate seven.
Resolution 14-488, approve amendment to professional service agreement with Explorer Solutions, Inc. to undertake aerospace cluster study for aviation business park. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to council for a motion and a second in Resolution 14-488.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any particular questions or comments any council members would like to make? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-488.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate seven.
Okay, thank you. The next one really is separate. I will, I do want to commend a lot, a lot of people here, because what this is, is bringing a lot of people together. The city's been involved, couldn't have done it. Champco was very much involved in the leadership of this at a point in time. East Central has been very much involved and provided us with some leadership and resources, and then the airports have done the same things. The county government's been involved. When we were thinking about economic development as a council, one of our concerns at that time was, was trying to get people together, develop a focus for economic development, and bring people together, and partner, and bring the resources and focus those resources. And as a result, organizations have come together. GOEDC has been very much involved in this, as have the partners within GOEDC. So I think this is an example of getting people together and laying the groundwork for which we hope will be a great future for aviation and, and Oshkosh, and in the region, really. So thank you very much. Okay, takes us to Resolution 14-489, approve professional service agreement with Elizabeth Hartman to use Department of Defense grant funds to create a development manual, restrictive covenants, and lease purchase agreement relating to aviation business park development. Would anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one come forward, I want to bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions or discussions on this personal service contract?
Just one, maybe Mr. Davis could answer it. Ms. Hartman has been, is the CEO and executive director of Champco, I believe. Now, this is not with Champco per se, correct? This is?
Correct.
As a personal agent in a sense?
She's her, she won't be acting under the auspices of Champco or anybody else. She'll be acting on her own in this particular case.
As a representative for the city in?
No, as a, as a contractor.
Okay.
I mean, we're basically hiring her as we hired Explorer Solutions.
As it says in here, right. Okay, to develop the manuals, restrict covenants, all that?
Yes. If you recall, about a year ago, we were planning on hiring Champco to do these, but fortunately, DoD came up with the grant money, so they would pay for it, rather than the city would be paying for it. And Champco will not be in existence, I believe, in any form that should be working on this starting January 1st, and that's when we were planning on having the work done, because we need the work done by next summer, when the aviation business park should be constructed, and we'll have to have the restrictive covenants and the development manual and lease agreements ready by then.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Questions? Just one comment on it. Champco will be in existence until 2016, probably, but it'll be at a much smaller level. It'll be scaled down considerably, and it'll be very much a small-time, part-time appointment. But Champco will exist as an org.
And I probably misspoke when I said, they wouldn't have staff.
They wouldn't have staff. It won't be, it won't be an operating.
Correct.
Follow-up question at, then, so there is no conflict of interest issue here whatsoever? I'll maybe refer that to the city.
Yeah, I can address that. Not with the Champco. We did identify a, at least a potential conflict of interest with Elizabeth's work with the university and the business accelerator in the park. She reviewed that. We reviewed it together. We don't see that as being an actual conflict, but we do have a letter from her, and the city's prepared to sign off on it, and I believe you're sending it to the university as well, correct, for them to sign off. If she would at some point identify an actual conflict, she'll bring it to everybody's attention, and we'll work it out. I don't really see it as being a problem, though.
Okay, great, because she does great work.
Okay, if there are no further questions or discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote on Resolution 14-489.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate seven.
Okay, it takes us to Resolution 14-490, approve 2015 business improvement district operating plan and budget. Would anybody like to come forward to speak to that?
I'd be happy to.
I'd be happy to. Dave Sparr, 103I, Evan, I'm the chair of the bid. I brought along some copies of the documents I sent out this morning. So our budget proposal for this year, the total amount, is up somewhat from last year and the two years before that, to $154,560. That is less than what we were running some years before that. We increased this year for a couple of reasons. One was to allow some money for parking study. That was requested by the planting office. And we did agree to that in an earlier meeting. We agreed to put that on our budget for 2015. Mr. Roloff also came to our budget meeting, requested some contribution to parking as an interim measure for 2015, hoping that the parking study would be completed during this year, hopefully early in 2015. And during the year, we could agree on a more permanent contribution for parking. It is the intent of bid to support parking in downtown Oshkosh. And as we all know, we've been reminded many times that that was the original purpose for the creation of the bid. But it's not the only purpose, and we have expanded quite a bit, both in our focus and in our monetary effect on the community since bid was started. I did want to point out that if you look at the parking contribution itself, which we proposed to be $15,000 for 2015, plus the $5,000 toward the parking study, and the additional money that we put into beautification, which includes, frankly, it's maintaining a lot of the city's property. It's mowing all the little lawns. I'm not sure how many there are, but I'm sure there's many more than 40 in the bid district. It's cleaning out the flower beds, cleaning out all around the shrubs and all the plantings. It involves a contractor that we hire, performing trash pickup, garbage pickup, putting up banners. There's a whole list of activities that this contractor performs. And when we started doing this initially, we paid quite a bit less to the contractor, but we've asked them to do more and more work, as we picked up some of the city's responsibilities that were done before by the Parks Department, I believe. So if you look at the parking contribution of 15, the contribution to the parking study of $5,000, and $38,800 that we have proposed for beautification, which includes all of those things I've mentioned, we are actually contributing $58,800 in our proposed budget, which is about 38% of the total budget for the year. That is higher than most of the other years, if you look back at that percentage, going back to the year 2000. And as you can see, not only has the percentage gone up somewhat, but the dollar amount has gone up quite a bit. We started with a budget, 2,000. Our budget, total budget was $90,300. Now it's in the 150s, 140s over the past few years. So that dollar contribution has increased. The amount of work we're doing has increased. We also have an employee who is performing a lot of the functions that we couldn't really do before that fell upon other people as volunteers. We now have someone who can go to other cities, look at other businesses that we may want to recruit for our downtown, and come back to the bid board. She has packages of materials to send to them. So we've got a lot more going than we did have, we had going for us a few years ago. I know Mr. Roloff would like us to give more money for parking. Frankly, the parking utility needs a lot of money. But I think we're doing our fair share this year. And we'd be happy to get into whatever discussions the council would want us to, over the next year, to set some kind of a permanent number, if we can do that. So I'd ask that the council approve our budget.
You may want to have a seat because of discuss. Go ahead.
Mr. Sparr, you mentioned beautification, and noticed that the beautification budget has increased substantially, not only this year over last year, but over the previous year.
Yes.
Can you talk about some of the other, you mentioned that the lawns, cleaning out flower beds and those kind of things. But is there some more substance that goes along with those?
I'll give you some of those. I'm not on the beautification committee. Megan Lang probably is the most familiar with that. But Cassie can also, Cassie Daniels is here and can help us with that. I know there are 104 flower pots that we maintain. We fill those. We pay to have the flowers put in. We put winter boughs and things in there. I don't even know what they're all called, but there's 104 of those. That's a lot of work just by itself. I guess I'll let Cassie fill that in, because she's much more familiar than I am. Cassie Daniels.
Cassie Daniels, 120 Jackson Street. Just to specify on beautification, the one specific thing that the Parks Department still does is they maintain Opera House Square as far as mowing the grass there and doing the flower buds. That's the only area within the bid district that the city still maintains there. So they do that. So as far as other green areas, we have a contractor, Kelly Green Lawn Care. He does all the trash pickup, comes down two to three times a week, does all the trash pickup, does all the mulching in all the back parking lots, all the weeding, all the weeding in the sidewalks, does all the bump outs. There are 16 bump outs on Main Street, maintains all of those, does anything with removal of the flower pots. We fill the soil for the 104 of them. We have the Christmas boughs that are put in them. We have the flowers that are put in them. I'm not sure if that really answers all your questions of everything that-
Appreciate it.
Yeah, that he does.
Mayor, can we bring forward, so you can ask questions?
Why don't we just see if anybody else wants to make any comments about it from the public, and then we'll get a motion in a second, and we'll ask people to come forward?
Thank you.
Will that work? Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, why don't you two just have seats right there? We may have more questions. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on this, as part of the public, general public input? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Now discussion. Mr. Herman?
Mr. Sparr, I have a couple of questions for you, please. From what I read out of your budget, this isn't an operations budget. This is a maintenance budget? Because all you're doing is plants, and flowers, and garbage, and things like that. There's nothing in your budget that I see where you collaborate with the Convention Business Bureau on events and functions. You don't work with the brand on any events and functions. You give a little bit of money to Waterfest at the Leech, Live at Lunch is very minimal. So it's really just the maintenance budget of the city's infrastructure down, in the downtown area, correct? Well, that's, no, that's not correct. That's a part of it. If you read the materials, we are, and as I mentioned earlier, Cassie Daniels is going to other cities, looking for businesses. We are in, she's receiving frequent phone calls, other contacts by mail and email, from places looking to locate here. She's receiving applications from, I guess this would be kind of maintenance, it's maintenance of buildings, because we have a program for retention that involves grants that can be made, both to existing businesses and ones who would like to come here. I think our budget is $20,000 for that portion of it for next year. And I believe we had some carryover as well. So it's, there's a large part of maintenance, and that certainly would be that beautification and parking, I guess you'd call parking maintenance as well. So that's at least 38% of our budget. Okay. But there's a lot more to it.
Okay. On the $15,000 for the parking permits, does the businesses then buy them from the bid, or are they just distribute it to members of the bid?
For the permits?
Yes.
Yeah, that is our proposal for this year.
Right.
And that is different from other years where we just turn the money over.
Okay. But I'm saying, so then, if I'm a downtown business, and I want one of the permits from the bid, I have to buy it from the bid?
Currently, this past year, we've been buying them, I believe, at a, if you buy 500, they were $1.35 per daily permit. We resold those for 75 cents to businesses. Now, if the council approves the budget, as indicated, we'd have a large number of these permits to give out. And the board hasn't really decided what we would charge for them, but I think the intent is to reduce the cost of those substantially, so businesses can purchase a bunch, give them out to customers who may want to be parked for more than two hours. That's a particular concern with beauty shops, places where they need to be there more than two hours, and they don't want to have to worry about getting tickets. Restaurants have the same problem. Have had a number of comments from people who run those places. Excuse me. So the intent is to sell them for a lower rate than what we're getting them and get some of that money back.
Sure, understandable. Ms. Daniels, I think I have a question for you. Again, I know we've had, asked for workshops, we've done some workshops. This is just approving the budget at this point. But in your budget to recruit, what businesses have you been able to bring up that are downtown?
Well, last year was the first year that we just started doing a full recruitment-retention package. In 2012, we did a whole rebranding of downtown. We had no materials for me to go out there with. So we finally put together packages. We have an up-to-date website and everything now. So before I left on maternity leave, I had started going to other downtowns, just to look, to see what they have, see if there's some niches. We did put together a wish list, the bid board did, as well as subcommittees, of what we'd like to see downtown. And so from, based on that, I would research other downtowns. And I've visited five to six, I believe, this past year before I went on maternity leave.
And has that information been provided to council, so we have an idea of what businesses may be coming to our downtown?
No, but I can definitely, I have a list of things, of places I've visited, places I've sent packets to, our wish list. I do have that information. I can definitely-
I think it'd be nice to know what businesses our business improvement district is trying to recruit and go after, especially in case council may have contacts with someone or some other business that they might like to see come to our downtown. Because it is an improvement district. I mean, you're trying to improve it, not just with plants and banners and-
Absolutely.
Things, but make it a destination, so that when our convention people come, they can go downtown, and there's a mix of things for them to go see, or go shop at, or stop at. I guess that's what concerns me, is I've been on council five years, and this budget hasn't changed. It's the same budget, same stuff, with no changes. And that's what bothers me, that this is an improvement district, and I don't see any improvements.
Well, we actually only have, within the district right now, we only have seven available retail spaces that are available. We have plenty of office spaces available, but there's only seven specific retail spaces available. So, and we have added a different program now, too. We used to have the facade program with that money, which was done in 2010 and 2011, when the construction was going on. This year, we did a retention grant program for existing businesses that we want to show our support for existing businesses as well. So we did add that program as well, which comes out of that recruitment-retention line as well.
That being said, where you're limited to the retail, in a previous workshop, there was discussion of expansion of the bid. Has that been brought up anymore in discussions with the bid board of expanding the bid?
Well, the city liaison, we've looked into with Jeff of how that would work with expanding the bid. There's different ordinances and different regulations that are required with that. I've had a couple of phone calls from people in the 600 block who would like to, but then I've also had people who don't want anything to do with it either. So it depends on, you know, those property owners, and if they really, if the desire to do it is there, if it's just a couple of people talking about it. That's kind of what we've run into with that.
Okay. So you have a marketing plan, you're moving forward with trying to generate some type of, whether it's a downtown business park model, or a downtown shops model, or a bar/restaurant model? You have some type of a plan of action that you're using to recruit?
Well, we, yes, we have a package plan that we've put together that pertains to our wish list, which I can definitely share with council members, as well as people that I've reached out to, or that have reached out to me. And then it's having a stronger connection of who owns those properties, of connecting with them, because you have property owners that are very specific of what they want to see in those buildings, and you have property owners that just want someone in the building. So it's having that connection as well. And we do have, starting last year, we did have a set advertising plan now as well, which was not in place in previous years. So that also is another added thing that we have.
Okay.
You've seen our buses and billboards and stuff around town.
Ms. Allison Osby. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Trump.
No, I'm done. I know. Thank you.
Ms. Allison Osby.
Um, a couple, I guess a couple of questions that I have is, you know, all things are a little bit different. I'm sure you can attest to Cassie that there's never enough money for what you want to do, you know, within the budget. And the city of Oshkosh is no different. And so, you know, we're looking at some of these things, and we want to partner in regards to some of these things regarding parking utility. And I see where the bid's coming from, but also the city right now is not cash flush either. And we've got some very, very tough decisions that are going to start as of tomorrow. So my question is, is, you know, has the bid done anything as far as like fundraisers? Have you guys partnered with anybody, like the CBB, or talked to, say, Diane at the foundation, or anything like that, or even put together a strategic plan, so that you know where the bid wants to be, you know, 2015 to, say, up to 2020?
No, we haven't. I mean, we've partnered with them in previous projects at the foundation and stuff, as far as beautification and stuff like that goes. But as of right now, we had that plan in 2000 that was done, which was of the downtown in general, which is now pretty much completed with the Riverwalk, which was the partnership with the city on that. But we, we've discussed at bid board meetings that it's time to put a new plan intact for the upcoming future. I'm not sure if the parking study, with the money that we put towards that as an overall city plan, if that comes together. I'm not sure what that all entails. I just know that there's $5,000 we allocated towards the parking study. I'm not sure if the parking study is an overall plan for downtown and for the city, or how, because that was through the city that the parking was going to be done, the parking study.
And has, so the bid hasn't partnered or tried to establish any relationships with either the foundation or the CBB to kind of help promote the downtown? Because, you know, and while the budget here, it's extremely important, from a taxpayer standpoint, there's been millions and millions and millions upon millions of dollars that has been invested within the downtown. So somebody may look at this, or feedback perhaps from the community may be, that in some regards, they take a look at the bid, and the bid's really not much different than it was five years ago, and is perhaps status quo. You know, where, you know, if tax dollars are going to continue to go down to enhance, enhance kind of the bid area, the downtown, the central city area, you know, what kind of partnership is going on in which, because, you know, just like there's not enough funds within the bid, there's not enough funds within the city to necessarily focus on that area. And that's why we've been talking about, and as well as even the school district has talked about, like the public-private relationships, and how important they are to help us kind of get through some of these tougher economic and budget times.
Right. I mean, I would disagree with your comment that downtown is the same as it was five years ago.
No, no, that's not my comment. That's feedback that, you know, we've heard. So this is just an honest discussion, you know, because we're talking about a budget. So, you know, and for full transparency, Cassie and I had had, you know, a couple of discussions in which, you know, I've just said, you know, here, here's a heads up, here's the feedback that we're receiving. So, you know, unfortunately, there are some tough discussions sometimes that we have to have when it comes to this point. So I don't want you to take offense to it, since I'm regurgitating what I'm hearing.
And we do have a partnership with the CBB. I mean, we've worked together before as far as marketing materials like that. You know, we are trying to coordinate signage with the city and with the CBB. But as far as an overall plan, there's no partnership with the CBB and with the foundation at this time. If that answers your question.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Well, I was going to answer one of Mr. Herman's questions before, but just about-
You have the floor. I got a list here of people.
Expansion of the bid.
It's your turn, so go for it. You got a turn.
But last, I know last year, it was actually East Central Regional Planning Commission, along with you to the extension, had done a meeting, a workshop with some of the southside business owners. And at that time, there was just no interest in either creating a bid themselves, or adapting into the bid that exists. But it's really up to the property owners to make that decision in the commercial area. I do, you know, I know, I've heard that, too. People have said that things have been status quo over five years. But I think having seven, just seven vacant retail spaces is really an indication of, you know, quite a, quite a bit of good work that's been done by the group. But, you know, you go to downtowns and other communities, and I've been in downtowns throughout northeast Wisconsin. There's far more than seven vacant retail spaces. So I think that's certainly a measurement of some progress that's been made.
Mr. Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Main Street, that part of it is a historic district. And about a year and a half ago, the Landmarks Commission came out with a historic plaque program. One or two of your members was enthusiastically behind it. We've heard no interest from the bid at all about this. There are communities throughout the country that use the history of especially their central districts, their downtowns, as a marketing tool to bring tourism into the central city. But there's been no interest at all on your part to this whole program.
To be honest, nobody from that Landmarks Commission has reached out to me at all in regards to that. The only information I have on that program was from Todd Cummings, who used to be on the board.
No one, no one, you didn't contact anyone in the Landmarks Commission or the Plan Commission? It's a phenomenal marketing tool, but there is absolutely no interest. There's been no interest that I've seen in really marketing the historic properties of our downtown at all. Communities throughout the country, especially the older communities, have got their act together incredibly well. And they know that it's a cash cow. The buildings are there. It takes putting a plan together to bring tourism into that part of the city. I've seen none of that. And I've lived here all my life. I've seen no emphasis on marketing the historic aspects of downtown.
Okay. I can honestly say I haven't thought of marketing it that way. I graduated with marketing, and I haven't even thought about marketing downtown as a historic district as far, as far as the open buildings that I have, because that's what I'm focusing on right now, is development of getting people in those businesses. But as far as Landmarks Commission, I, I mean, I can certainly reach out to them. I have not heard anything more about the plaque program since Obleos.
Todd was very aggressive about it, and he just got nowhere with people. It was like, I heard comments, and there's nothing historic about our downtown.
Well, I don't think that's true.
Well, it's a marketing tool available to you, and I think you've got to put something together to really focus on that aspect.
Other questions? Comments? Yes, Ms. Allison Osby.
I just think, you know, and this is something that Cassie and I had discussed earlier today, as well as last week when we spoke. And, you know, I think it's very difficult for Ms. Daniels, because she's, she is kind of in the middle. She has a very, very tough job, having had a business in the bid district and being a part of the bid consortium. Ms. Daniels was not the bid manager at the time, but it was Maureen Lasky, you know, at the time. And I certainly watched her. And it's a very unique group, because everybody's very, very independent, very entrepreneurial-like. And so obviously, when you, when you have a bigger area, you're going to have a lot of vast differences. So I guess my question would be is, you know, while we see the budget, is, you know, I guess what is the bid or the bid board's response to council, when, you know, I know, like, I've received some phone calls over the last couple of months that have said, "We don't want you to approve the budget." So from our standpoint, how exactly is the bid then going to get on one page, so that they speak with one voice? So when we go to approve a budget, you know, we're not hearing some saying, "Well, you know, we'd like to see the bid formatted in a different manner," or, "No, no, everything's great, and the bid is just fine." So, and there's not representation either way, you know. So I guess what would be the bid's response to that, when the council is kind of- So I guess what would be the bid's response to that, when the council is kind of, is looking at the budget, and we're reviewing, and we're taking a look, and, and it, and I, I don't understand or know all of the basics, you know, regarding the issue for parking utility? Because when I look at what the bid contributed before, to what's proposed for 2015. So, and again, Cassie, I don't know that you can, you can answer that, because you're just trying to keep it all together.
Perfect. On that note, actually, I was going to turn it over to Dave, but as far as your last comment of parking, I was under the impression that the contract that we had signed was over as of 2014.
So this is, and this is the new proposal, correct?
This is for 2015.
That's, that's how I.
Correct. That we had fulfilled for 2014.
Are you talking about members of the bid board, or members of the bid district?
Both.
Okay. I think it's good to have different points of view on the bid board, and we had, we've had some spirited discussions, believe me, especially at budget meetings, the past three years. We have one member of the board who doesn't think bid should be involved in any types of, running any kind of activities downtown. Those things should be able to do themselves. We have other members who want to put much more money into running events and activities downtown. But that's part of, you know, every, every business is represented by a different person, and they're all different businesses. For me, running a law firm, I don't get any money from most of the events downtown, other than maybe Irish Fest, when we get some drunks arrested. But it's, it's not, you know, you've got retail businesses, you've got people running offices, you've got people who have restaurants. They all benefit from different activities. For me, it's just good to see things going on downtown, not a lot of empty storefronts. Unfortunately, when you walk through the downtown, unless you're in the vicinity of a bar or a restaurant, and there aren't that many of them, there's a number of bars, but not many restaurants. There's not a lot of people walking around if they're not near those establishments. And it'd be nice to see 50 people walking down Main Street like it was back in the '60s, but that's pretty tough. I don't know many places that have that anymore, other than maybe downtown Madison, State Street, around Capitol Square. But I think things are a lot more active than they have been, if you look back 10 years ago, for example. And I think part of that, certainly not all of it, part of it is what the bid and the bid members and the businesses supporting the bid have been doing. You have to remember that these are not city taxes being used for the bid budget. Granted, there are city, certainly city taxes being used for improvements, no question, a lot of money. But the funding for the bid budget comes from the businesses in the bid. It is not a tax that this, other taxpayers in the city of Oshkosh are having to pay. That is probably why a lot of these other people who think they might want to be in the bid, don't want to be in the bid when they find out, "Gosh, we have to pay for this. It costs money." So, like that old song, "You don't always get what you want." You know, we may not get what we want, you may not get what you want. We're trying to work with you, though, and we're trying to contribute, and we're hopeful that this is enough for this year, that we can do our other activities, other things that we've got planned with our budget money, and come back next year, hopefully during the year, and not wait till this time next, next year in 2015, but earlier, and come up with some plan for the year. I don't like coming to this thing saying, "Okay, who's going to attack us this time? Who's going to attack us? You know, what are we going to have to defend?" We shouldn't have to defend this. This is money that businesses are essentially volunteering to give to the city. So, again, I'd ask for your approval of our budget as it exists tonight.
Questions? I just have one question for clarification, and I have a comment. The parking permits, I guess I got to understand this a little bit better. I thought you were going to buy the parking permits and give them away, but it sounds like you're going to buy the parking permits and sell them, which means that you're going to have money come back in, which you use in other parts of the budget. So it's, it's really not $15,000 just for parking out of 154. It might be, if you sell them for 50 cents on the dollar, then you'd have money coming back in.
That is true, if we, we really.
I misunderstood that, that whole thing. So can you just, so you've decided that you are going to re, you're going to act as a reseller?
I'll tell you what happened at the budget meeting. This, Mr. Roloff was there.
I just wanted some clarification.
Yeah, and we don't.
It's one thing if you're giving it away to people. I just, I just want to be clear.
Yeah, and we, we haven't really decided that, but we, it came up at the budget meeting after Mr. Roloff made a request for funds for the parking utility, and one of the members suggested that that might be a way to do it, that would give some benefit to the members of the bid, along with giving the contribution to the city, because the city's still getting the money, and there's no way the city'd be selling $15,000 worth of those permits. Maybe $1,000 worth. So we did talk about, well, what do we do? Do we give them away? Do we keep selling them for 75 cents? Do we charge 35 cents? And there wasn't any real decision made, and I guess we'd have to do that at our next meeting if the budget's approved. But you're right, if we sell some, there would be some money coming back. But as you probably know, during the year, there are events that come up, there are things that come up that people want money for. There may be additional businesses that we want to recruit, and, gosh, we might have used all our recruitment money, as we pretty much have this year. So, you know, you can always spend money if you have it there. So if there is some money coming back, we either would use it, or we'd go into our reserves for the next year.
I just want clarification.
The answer is no, no decision, really.
I had a different understanding. Okay, thank you. The comment is, is I'll be voting present on this. I have members of the families that own substantial property in the, in the bid district. This could directly or indirectly affect them financially, so I will vote present. Okay, if there's no other comment, oh, yes.
Actually, I will also be voting present on this. I also have family members and a member of my family who is on the bid board as well.
Okay, then I'll ask, take the roll call vote on, what do I have here? On resolution 14-490.
Actually, at this time, I would move to lay this over to the November 11th meeting.
There's a motion, is there a second to lay it over to the November 11th meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded a discussion on laying it over to the November 11th meeting.
I mean, the reasoning for this is that this, this information did come to us at a rather late hour, and I think that many of us, while, there were some questions asked this evening, I think we would like to take a look at this in a little more detail.
Okay, and then if we have questions, we probably want to let them know what those questions will be, if we were to do that.
I actually am not opposed to that, because we haven't approved anything regarding our general budget. We haven't even listened to the departmental budgets yet, and I think we need to take care of that first, before I think we approve anything here.
Okay, to say the only comment, I think we would need to talk to them about the things that we'd like to know.
Absolutely.
So, so that they know, so it just doesn't come up live. Other comments on the layover to November 11th?
Specifically, my request would be, I'm very concerned about the permit issue, because that could have an even more negative impact on the parking utility fund. We're estimating we're going to have a loss of $14,000 in the parking utility this year, and we've been running a $7,000 to $14,000 deficit in the parking utility with the bid's contributions. That's why I'm concerned about that. I would hope that we could have that discussion, so to give feedback to the bid board. That's, my concern is about the financial stability of the parking utility, because the parking utility right now owes the general fund about $100,000.
So maybe the way to solve that is sell off some of the parking lots.
Well, but I think we need to have a discussion. The parking permit idea was thrown out there, but it wasn't resolved at the meeting. It was just thrown out there towards the end of it as a last-minute discussion. I have concerns about that. I like the idea of holding it over, so we can engage and perhaps do that. But the parking utility is losing a lot of money, and 70% of the parking utility is in the bid district, and we've invested over $2 million in parking lots in the bid district in the past five years. We need a long-term, sustainable solution for this, not just, this isn't about a one-year thing, this is about a long-term thing, and that's why I'd like to continue to engage the bid board. So that's my input into your request, Mr. Mayor.
Is two weeks going to be sufficient to resolve these issues?
I don't know.
It, it almost has to be, or at worst four weeks.
I thought it was a second meeting, it had to be done by the second.
The drop dead date is November 25th, because Finance Department plans to send out the property tax bills the first week of December, immediately after Thanksgiving. So we have no more than one month to get this resolved, because council needs to approve this in order for the bid to levy their assessment, which provides the funds that they need, and the funds that the parking utility also needs.
Okay, so we can leave it until the 11th, and hopefully settle it then, and then if we have to, we could go a little bit longer, but that would be it. Okay. Mr. Herman, you can make a comment?
I'll make a comment later.
Okay, all in favor of laying over resolution 14-490 to November 11th?
Cummings?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
No.
Tower?
President.
Curated five, one no, one present.
Okay.
Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
I know I asked a bunch of questions, Mr. Spire, and, and that I'm supportive of the bid. I think the bid has done a lot of good things. I think my frustration a little bit is that we don't have good communication between council and our downtown business district. And I would like to see more of that dialogue, so that there's a lot better give and take. The only time we hear from the bid is when it's budget time. Or when we have an event downtown, and you're mad about the parking, and then Main Street's closed off, or something like that, then we hear from the bid, because they're upset about that. So it, it kind of goes hand in hand, that I think there's 12 months out of the year, and it would be nice to hear more than just getting the minutes in our council packet from the bid meeting, whether it's a workshop every few months, or what's going on, is was brought up, they have a marketing plan, we haven't even seen the marketing plan, and what businesses would be coming into Oshkosh. That's why I asked Mr. Davis earlier, if he could give us a little bit of information about what developments are coming to the city. I think council should be brought up to speed of what businesses are coming and going, and what's happening in Oshkosh, so that we can market ourselves to people to come to our downtown. We have retail shops, we have restaurants, we have bars, we have this, we have that. If we don't know what's going on, it's pretty hard for us to recruit ourselves as a council member. So I think it's the lack of communication.
Mr. Cummings would like to make a comment, then we're going to have to move on.
And I'd be very happy to sit down with Cassie and people in our plan, planning department, and the Landmarks Commission, to show you the value of marketing the historic aspects of downtown, and primarily the historic plaques. I mean, talking to Todd Cummings, he said, "A lot of people that stop there and have their picture taken in front of the plaque." I mean, it's, 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 it's almost a freebie, and it's right there. And I think we've got to jump on it, and jump on it.
I have a 14-second response.
14 seconds, then we're going to have to move on.
Start the clock.
We're past the side of business, all these things have been discussed outside the council meeting.
For many, many years, we had a council representative who attended virtually all the bid meetings. That was a good thing for both of us. We'd be happy to do that again, or we'd be happy to schedule a workshop. Either one or both. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll see you again on, on the 11th. Anybody else want, one final comment, if who hasn't spoken yet to make the final comment? Okay, then we'll go to council discussion, direction of the city manager, and future agenda items. Go EDC update?
We are currently in the process of narrowing down candidates for our executive director position. We'll probably be conducting interviews in the next couple of weeks. I think by mid-November, we'll be able to make an announcement on that. And we've, as pointed out earlier, the, with the award of the funding from the city, we'll be in the process of hiring a firm based out of Milwaukee and Madison to assist us with our marketing effort. So we're making a lot of progress, and the fundraising initiative will be beginning shortly as well. You'll see some announcements coming out fairly soon with that. So things are going very well, and we're pleased with the progress that we're making.
Okay, one thing I've done on that, I've made requests twice now, that we had an orientation session at Go EDC, and there were some overheads, and I thought that gave a nice history, and it would be nice if you could distribute that to all the council members.
Yep, I'm planning to put in this week's packet.
Okay, so put it, I was hoping we'd have it tonight, but okay. So it's a nice overview, so people see the things that are going on, what has gone on, and where things are to go. Okay, future agenda items, workshop tomorrow night, folks, 29th and the 30th. We're going to be together for a while, it'll probably be long evenings. These will be more than two-hour evenings, for those that are new, they're more likely to be four hours, or something like that. Pizza be available downstairs at 4:30.
Downstairs?
Not downstairs, in the back room.
Oh. I was going to say, will you move?
Yeah.
That's my dinner.
Mine, too.
Maybe, maybe we can just camp out in Trina's office.
That's what I thought, maybe we're moving to her office.
We have our CIP discussion on November 5th. There's a possibility for a fourth budget workshop. I don't know what if we, last year, when we got through with everything, we asked that we had another meeting, so we could identify questions that could be out there. There is the potential that we could do that on the 5th at the same time. I don't know what council members want to, want to do. Do you want to schedule one additional meeting after the 5th?
Can we determine that after the two nights?
We can determine it anytime we want. I'm just, I just want to see where people are. The one thing is, is we know we have a hard time scheduling meetings, so the sooner we schedule a meeting, the more dates are going to be available.
I, I.
This is a group where every day, they fill their calendars.
Right. I think it worked out well last year.
So that's the only advantage of doing it sooner, but it makes sense to do it, do we need it, or do we not need it?
I, I thought it worked out well last year, because it gave staff, and Ms. Roloff, and Finance Director, opportunity to, to kind of digest everything, and, and hear where council's going, and gave us several options that, you know, if we do this, this will reduce the levy, if we do that, it would increase it, if we do, you know. I just think all those options, after all the discussion, after all the meetings, is a good way to really nail it down. And we made some tough decisions last year at that meeting that affected the budget drastically. So I would support having that other meeting.
Let me suggest this, let, let's wait and talk about it tomorrow night, and also bring your calendars tomorrow night. We could set a tentative date, because as I say, the longer we wait to do it, we wait till the very end, like if we wait until November 5th to do it, the dates are going to be taken, because we have a short timeframe. So bring calendars tomorrow night, let's set a tentative date. If we don't need the date, we can do it on the 5th, we'll just cancel it. We all love canceled meetings at night. So tomorrow night, let's, let's talk about it again, think about it. I thought it was a valuable meeting last time.
Yep.
We could do it the night of the CIP, but at times, we've had concerns that we haven't had enough time to discuss the CIP the way it is, with the other things. So let's talk about it again tomorrow night, at, at the end of the session.
Yeah.
You might get some thoughts and possible nights, and what the timeframe would be, when we'd have to do it to make it effective.
Right.
For when we have to.
You want to bridge the gap.
You guys have to get materials ready.
The real advantage, I think, in the past couple of years, what the council's done is, when they get to the budget approval time, in this case, it'd be November 25th, you have options that you're kind of, you've got a script from which you're working about which decisions you've gotten it down to, and what you need to be is ready for that meeting. And if, whatever you need, if you're ready on November 5th, that's great, but if you need a little more time, that's where I think what the mayor's getting to, because that really gives you something to hone in on when you're at, there at the meeting on the 25th. The other option is, if we're, our meetings are ending as early as they are, at 7:30, there's a possibility, maybe we just keep the workshop rolling past the council meeting time.
That's just another food for thought.
Let's think about it, talk about it tomorrow night.
Very good.
Okay, sex offender workshop, we still need to determine a date. That'll be coming, I think, in the future. I don't think we're prepared to do that yet. Somebody has another comment. And then, Mr. Cummings, you had something you wanted to mention.
Thank you, Mayor.
Got your attention.
As we get into the budgeting process, I think it's important for the citizens or the taxpayers to know there are a lot of things that happen to us that are mandated by either Washington or Madison, or just way beyond our control, one of which is payment for municipal services to the city. That covers, that covers the monies coming from Madison for police, fire, refuse collection at state-owned properties, the university, prison, and so forth. And when we were in Madison, a few of us last, a couple of weeks ago for the League of Wisconsin municipalities, those cities which have a university, I believe drafted a letter to the governor asking that these funds be returned to normal levels. So I've asked Mr. Roloff to kind of explain where we are now compared to where we were when the program started, and how it severely packs our ability in the budgeting process, and as the university grows, those services grow, and as we look at the surrounding properties, the off-campus student housing, we're incurring a lot of cost answering complaints, inspection department. So I guess, I think it's important that the citizens know the impact that these mandates have on us as far as budgeting. Mr. Roloff?
The information that we've talked about earlier from the Town and Gown Committee with the league has pointed out that when the program was created in nineteen seventy-three, the idea of the program was for the state to reimburse municipalities for police, fire, and refuse. We don't provide service, refuse service to the university, so we're really only talking about police and fire services. And the program at one point was funded at a hundred percent, the university and all the state institutions that are in town. It's not just the university, the resource center, the prison, et cetera. About ten years ago, the program was still getting funded at about eighty percent of full cost. That meant that they took a look at the proportional share of value that the university had and, and determined how much of a proportion of police and fire the state should be paying for all those properties. Since two thousand and three, that program has been getting cut continuously, that we are now getting reimbursed at a rate of about forty-four percent of the entire cost, down from eighty percent just a few years ago. And what happens is that those have typically helped to offset costs for police and fire. Now, the local taxpayer is footing the bill for that and not the state, and the state university, we love having the state university here, but those costs for the basic services, police and fire, we're not getting reimbursed at that full amount, and there is some information that we had at our workshop that we're going to bring back to you at the workshop tomorrow night so that you have an idea of what that has meant to us over the last few years. It's, it's been frozen, state revenues have been frozen, and in this case, actually, cut over time. Plus, with this payment for municipal services program, other communities are now sort of getting on board, and there used to be only a hundred local units of government that were part of this program. Now you have over three hundred local, local units of government going after the, this program. So you have more slices of the pie that have to get created, and the pie's actually gotten smaller. So what happens is, the payment for a large, a community with a large amount of state property, we're the ones that lose on that.
And I think we'll cover this tomorrow night, but what, just, this year, what's the effect of, on our budget this year?
We are going to lose eighty thousand dollars this year alone with that, with that one single cut.
Okay, another opportunity for citizen statements to the council, it's an opportunity given. You have an opportunity to speak to something going on in the city that's positive or negative. We'd ask that you could pour the microphone, limit your comments to no more than five minutes, give us your name and address, don't speak to anything else on the agenda tonight.
Actually, my name's Lee Williams, three thirty-one Broad Street, and actually, I have something again for Mr. Cummings and Mr. Roloff. What is going on with that eyesore at the end of the river, the pioneer? I know that's been your puppy for the last year, Mr. Cummings, and I was just was wondering if you've had any?
Ms. Lawrence can answer that because it's in litigation right now.
We're currently in litigation.
I mean, is there any way that you can step on his fingers and actually get him to kind of, get him to kick it in the butt a little? Pardon my pun here, but.
We sued him.
We've taken legal action.
Okay. And my next question is for the new building on Whittle Street. I know they got that waiting pond in the front. I was wondering, is there going to be a detention pond on the back southwest side of that building?
Mr. Patrick deals with that more on a more regular basis?
I'm just asking, that's all.
On the, on the west side of the property, there's underground stormwater management system.
Okay, no, I just was wondering, I mean, because I know you have that cute little waiting pond that kids are just going to love, sitting in the front there right by the front door.
Well, it's, it's going to be an area that's a biofilter that's going to be dry and planted with plants.
So on, on the front side, it'll be dry, and then the backside, it's going to be an underground storage facility.
Like they got out here in the park.
Just like right out here, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
My address is eight one fifty, eight, eight one five West Linwood, and I'd like to spend a few minutes on the council's favorite topic, the budget, and the reason I wanted to speak a few minutes about the budget now is that I will have an opportunity to talk at the workshops, and I would like to address some things that the council should consider. I think what one of the nice aspects of this city of Oskoche's budget is the key performance measures that are included in it, and I would like to speak a couple, a couple of minutes in regards to those performance measures, measures that are for the common council. Some of them, quite frankly, don't, don't make too much sense to me, like for, for instance, variance between resources budgeted and resources spent. That seems to me like it was, that is, that saying is that, that it's the variances in actual budget and approved budget, and if that's the case, I think, I think the responsibility for the development of those variances, hopefully good variances, are responsible, responsibility of staff and not a common council. I don't think the common council should be in a day-to-day operation, decision, decision mode with the departments and making small, not small, but making decisions on whether or not to spend some budgeted money or not to spend some budgeted money. So I, I think, I think the variances in budgets are the responsibility of staff, not the common council. The, another goal is percentage of the key performance index these targets achieved. I'm not sure where the public could find those key performance index targets, because I don't think that they're in the budget, and how, how can people understand how much is being achieved other than having the budget sold at X number of percentage? What I would stress that the common council members should consider is perhaps adding two different measurements. One measurement is, is the percentage of debt limitation ratio, which is now, I think, eighty-five percent, and the other measurement is a measurement that is a percentage when you get the increase in property tax rate divided by the increase in consumer price index, and having that as a guidance for effectiveness and the use of, usefulness of these measurements. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any else care to come forward? They know and come forward. We will move to the city manager announcement and statements.
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Then I'll ask the deputy mayor, Allison Osby, for a motion to go into closed session.
If I may, Mayor, can we go back and cover, because we missed this item here to talk openly regarding the city manager's evaluation process?
Oh, okay, that was on the, the added one. Okay.
So I don't know if we can take a few steps back.
Yep, I will, we'll do that.
Thank you.
We are going to take a few steps back because that was on the revised.
Yeah, and you might not have that on your list. Okay, great.
I don't have it on mine.
Oh, I bet you it's in here.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
We're there, yep.
I am asking my fellow council, typically, when it comes to the city manager evaluation, a lot of times we kind of get through budget season before we attack the city manager evaluation process. I know we're extremely busy right now, however, I'm going to ask that we add just one more thing to our plate now, and where we start the process now, and that's why I'm asking to go into closed session, as I think we need to really start, start that process now. Really, more for the reason in that, you know, how we've done the evaluation, is we've had the typical standard questions, and then a couple of years ago, we started to say, okay, versus just having, just the daily operational duties that the city manager has, you know, we're attaching additional goals and focus items that we wanted our city manager to take a look at, and through that process, you know, because sometimes the budget season goes a little bit longer because there's never been a year in which the budget has been easy, then Mark's evaluation sometimes has kind of come a little bit later, and the result of that then has sometimes been where we've needed to carry over into the first of the year. So sometimes we're not even approving, you know, his evaluation or looking at goals or anything of that nature, and we're not delivering those to him until after the first of the year, and I think one year we were even probably, because of a stressful budget season, it was more like the end of February. And realistically, the city manager should be evaluated on twelve months of performance. So if the council is in favor and would be willing to go along with this timeline, I would like to start the process this evening. We would probably have another one to two closed sessions, going into likely two, both of the November meetings, which would be the eleventh and the twenty-fifth, and then we would shoot for the ninth of December to give the city manager evaluation as well as direction on any, you know, goals or however that process is going to be, or how we're going to handle the evaluation. When I had spoke to staff, it's highly unlikely that we will have a meeting on December twenty-third. Is that still correct? If you're asking me.
I think that's on everybody's Christmas list.
Okay, so that's where, if the council would be supportive of this, I would like to be able to discuss with the city manager, his performance over the two thousand and fourteen year on December ninth, which then means we're going to be very, very busy over the next couple of weeks, in addition to budget.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Yep.
So come on.
Okay.
Okay.
The, the, the other item that just would like to have some discussion among council before we go into closed session is prior years, but I do not believe the last two, we did not have any input from department heads in regards to the city manager evaluation. Mr. Roloff and I had discussed that, you know, is it, you know, isn't it an essential part? Is it helpful? He is fine either way, and then when I did double, double check, it has been three years since we had any input from department heads as far as the city manager evaluation. How does council feel about that? Would they like to include it this year or not? The other thing would be is that there would be, it would be done anonymously, so versus having there be any concern, having it come through City Hall in any department, the correspondence would come anonymous directly to me at my residential address.
Correction, we had it last year.
Right.
Under my evaluation. We did have it last year.
Did we do that department then?
Yeah.
Okay, then my apologies, I misspoke.
And the response is usually not one hundred percent.
Yeah, it's about twenty-five percent.
I still think it's valuable because we've done it a number of times over the years, and the response has been anywhere from twenty-five percent to almost a hundred percent.
Right.
I think it's a good, from my own perspective, I've always argued for it because I think it's good from two standpoints. One, I think we have gotten some valuable input at points in time from people, number one. Number two, I think it's important for to give those people the opportunity if they want to make comments. Some, some have chosen, the response last year, quite frankly, was not very good from department heads, you said in terms of number of people, but we did get some responses, and a couple of responses were kind of insightful, so I, I, I think it's a good idea. Obviously, important to keep it anonymous and to go to you, but I think that, that can be done, so.
Yeah, I think it's important.
I'm for it, and I think it's.
I advocated for it last year and supported it again this year.
And I think, and that was something that Mr. Roloff and I had discussed was, you know, and it really is, I, and I agree with the mayor, I think we at least should give the department heads the opportunity. It's their responsibility whether to act on that opportunity or not, but, you know, one of the discussions was, you know, perhaps, you know, there's always kind of that fear, if it runs through City Hall, will somehow, somebody find out, you know, what it is? And so I think, you know, maybe, we may or may not have a better response by having it come directly to me, but at least we're giving the opportunity.
And that's what typically have been done, is go to the.
Two, the, the two years I did evaluations, they were not run through City Hall, so I don't think we've had them that way otherwise. As Mr. Fitzpatrick would say, would probably not fill them out, so.
They came to our homes.
They came to our homes.
Yeah, it was came to our homes.
All right.
Okay, anybody else have anything here?
But he will assist you and get them to the department heads with self-addressed envelopes to whatever address you would like to put it on.
Okay.
Jamaica, Cancun, you know. Doesn't matter.
Okay, folks, let's, let's move. Now we'll go to a motion to go into closed session presented by the deputy mayor, Allison Osby.
Thank you. I move that the, I move that following the adjournment of this meeting, the council convened into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five, one C of the Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the performance evaluation and compensation regarding the city manager and employee over which the common council has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility.
For a second? Second. Any discussion? See none, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on the motion to go into closed session.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrie, seven.
Okay, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, we are adjourned. Let's try to get there within about five minutes, so people need to make a stop.
Okay.